...who they feel has served the community very well. The council, of course, in starting from the beginning on the policy, it's been left, because sometimes you have to get into the minutia. Some of it is, okay, what are the colors going to be if we agree to this policy? What are the colors of the sign going to be? I know the city of Salisbury inverts their color. I think they're white on green, but for this, they're green on white. So the county is white on black, I mean, excuse me, black on white. We can make it white on black, or we could make it county colors. We can make it blue on yellow, or yellow on blue, unless you're not too crazy about the county colors. Either way, we would want to, you know, I guess it would be our decision. I don't think, I don't think we'd have to go to a public hearing or anything. It would be our decision as to what we'd like the colors of the sign to be. That can always be discussed later unless anybody wants to make a comment on it now. Anybody have an opinion on this?
I have an issue with it. I'm wondering how that's going to be handled through our 911.
Well, it doesn't replace the actual sign that's there. They put it on top of it.
I understand that, but what about when people are calling 911, you know, and saying, I look, you know, I'm on Joan's place. Well, Joan's place happens to be somebody that's being honored. You see what I'm saying?
Right.
And they actually live on Taylor Avenue or something. Is 911, I think we need to get it, and it might not be a problem, but I think we'd like to, I'd like to see an input from our 911 operation on this before it's changed.
I'm sure that-
It's already cross-routed.
Yeah.
If the city's already doing it, then, you know, I mean, it's a unified system, so maybe ask them, like, how does it work for the city, sort of?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I think it's a great thing to do. I just want to make sure we're looking out for public safety, too, on this.
So I'm hoping the council's had the chance to review this. Any, any input as far as, I would like to, I would like to skip the policies and the criteria and the requests just now. Part of that's all condensed in the street dedication application itself. First of all, does the council want to move forward with this idea of dedicating a street sign in Wycomico County for an individual who is deemed worthy of that?
I'm good.
I think it's good to have a policy.
Good.
No problem with it?
Okay, so we do have-
So we get that other matter straight.
We're unanimous on that, yeah. Okay, good. Outside of that, the application requires the existing street name, the location, the historical or cultural influence of the honorary on the county, significant lineage or family ties to the county and/or association with the county, geographical relationship of the street to the area of interest of the applicant. In other words, if it is a resident in Mark Kilmer's district, he'd probably get very upset if we put the road in Joe Hollis' district.
Probably.
So, anyway, it's just a process. So that's what the geographical represents. And then clearly defined community or public contribution made by the honorary in order to receive this distinguished honor. So is there any, any part of the application that the council members object to or would like to fine tune or replace or add to?
Mr. Cannon, I might just offer one thought on it. It doesn't address how the, the signs are going to be paid for.
We're getting back to that.
That could be, that could be in the resolution.
We're getting back to that. It does. A little bit higher. I wanted to go to the application first. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
All right. I like the application. I think it's appropriate.
Covers all the bases? Okay. Everybody seems to be in agreement? Okay. Going back up to the very first page again, under policy, does anyone have any comments they'd like to make under the policy, the purpose of the program, the requests for honorary signs, and the criteria for review? That would partially include what Mr. Taylor was suggesting.
I, I think it's a very good idea to have, make sure that any honorees must be deceased. I mean, sometimes you can get, you know, where a bunch of politicians honoring each other, you know, and, you know, that's always-
Sounds like a bridge.
That's kind of unseemly, you know, sometimes. I mean, I'm, sorry, I forgot about that. No, but, you know, it's better if they're, you know, to have a little distance still.
I think in most cases that will be the concern and be the issue, so.
Okay.
I think it's a very good idea.
Does this include a, having a, you know, even if it's informal, a public meeting or something like that, or some sort of input session? I wonder if that would-
Well, that's a good point, Josh. Laura, I'm assuming that if, when this, we're working on the nuts and bolts right now, but if the council finds that everything here is acceptable, this would have to go forward as a resolution, and as such-
That is correct. It would come back before council in final form for your, for your approval.
And then, of course, the individual policy. One thing I didn't know if I agreed with, it's sort of relevant to what Josh had stated, was the request for honorary signs. It would say the dedication application would be submitted to the county council administrator. No offense to the county council administrator, but I was wondering why this wouldn't start at the executive level and then move down to the council level.
Because it says it goes to the administrator, who then gives it to the executive.
Yeah, yes.
So why is it going to, you know, just have to go right to the executive office?
Anybody's thoughts on that?
It's legislative.
Yeah, give Wayne something more to do.
Thanks.
Opinions? Leave it like it is, or do we, or do you, would you suggest that we go to the executive branch first?
Especially start with the executive branch, right?
I would think so, yeah.
And streamline it, give it to the executive branch.
Okay, so we'll fix that up a little bit?
I can change that, yes.
Great, okay. The, I'm, it says once, in, under policy down at the very bottom, it says, once the sign is no longer serviceable due to age, vandalism, et cetera, it shall be removed and not replaced. I thought that was kind of unusual.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
So we'll, we'll leave it in place. I recognize, you're giving us something to work with here.
Yeah, and you've got to think about the cost of getting it replaced as well.
Yeah, that's, that would be next. And then, again, the cost of this, I think, should go, because initially, the cost refers to the, I believe, the county council, maybe, administered through the Wycomico County Council Office. I think this should all be going through Public Works Roads, so we'll clarify that.
I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, it shouldn't be too much. I mean, I wonder how much the city, okay.
We make the house, the signs in-house, don't we?
Right.
So it's minimal.
So everybody's okay with removing the not replaced portion?
Absolutely. Somebody can knock it down the next day.
And then the next part is that no more than three honorary designations shall be awarded in the county during a calendar year. Didn't have a problem with that on the phone, anyone else? Okay. Program, the purpose of the program, we, I think we, that was explained and agreed upon in the, in the context of the application, where it says, insert cost. All supporting documentation is required at the time of the application, and along with a map of the requested sign location, and a fee. Is there a fee? Councilman Jackson, is there a fee for the city when someone applies for a city road sign?
Not to my knowledge.
All right, okay. Is there a- Insignificant?
Sorry, I mean-
Go ahead, Joe.
Is there a process in here for which if somebody doesn't want that put on their street? I mean, not everybody's going to agree.
That's a good point. Public hearing?
Yeah.
The way it's written down, no, that is not a requirement.
I mean, you know, there's, all neighbors don't get along.
We can certainly add it if you guys would like to do it.
Does the application mention the location? Speaking of that? Yes. Yeah, I guess I missed that. Okay. And at the top, at the top of your location. All right, public hearing, yeah.
I'm not talking about a public hearing about whether the bill will be passed. I'm talking about, is there anything in the bill that's going to address the point of-
When the name's been submitted.
Comes up if somebody doesn't want it on their street sign.
All right, so the process would have to include a public hearing?
We'll have to add that to the policy.
That's a really good point. Anything else? Criteria for review? I think Mark touched on some of that. Okay, all that leaves is color.
Do you need to do some strike-offs? Have graphics do some strike-offs?
Sure. Okay, yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Need something to look at?
That'd be great. Thank you, Wayne.
I really like tie dye, if that's helpful.
That's a mille-mille down there. Okay, so we'll move forward with this. What's the next step, is to put this in a formal resolution, or another work session, or what?
I'll work with Wayne and Mr. Taylor on getting it in final form, and then we'll bring it back before council.
All right, all right. Speed is of the essence. Am I not right?
Yes.
So, thank you very much. Thank you for your input, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, thank you.
The, yep. We do have a request to eat lunch, so I'll have to add-
Hurt some of the stomachs.
Entertain a motion to adjourn so that we, or entertain a motion for recess.
We got it.
Half an hour. Some move, second, all of you?
I'll be better off, I guess.
Okay, we are reconvenienced the Wycomico County Council for legislative session 2019-08 for April 16, 2019. My first item on the work session is to discuss a summary of the changes to the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2020, 2024. Weston Young, how are you?
Hey, good, good. So you all should be in receipt of a memo.
President Cannon, would it be appropriate to have this work session after we meet with the school board nominees, since they're scheduled to come in at 1:00?
Would you mind?
I have a two o'clock at the airport, but it all depends how long you think this will take, if you don't think this will take long. Don't ask how fast you talk. I can be quick, and then we can go into more detail. My, my proposals with, with the individual departments, if you have specific project questions, when you bring them up regarding the budget.
I've got a 45-minute presentation.
All right.
Your, your call.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and move forward, and we appreciate that. Let's move forward.
I'll be quick.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Weston.
So, and, and we're going to get this revised CIP on the website. I did notice, when I was flipping through it earlier today, that there were some changes made to the airport projects that were not included in the memo, and that is a mistake on my part, but I figure I'll just read down it. We originally submitted the CIP December 18, 2018, and we have since revised it during the budget process. In some cases, as I mentioned earlier, when Steve Miller was up here, we've proposed using existing PEGO as a funding source, as well as we've pushed some projects out a year. Sometimes it's just the first phase of the project, or sometimes the entire project, a multi-year project, has all been shifted one year, and I'll, I'll try to touch on all of those. So general changes to the CIP, we have added an existing PEGO category that, if you look at the specific page that shows projects by funding source, it's page two, numbered page two, not PDF document, page two. The green color shows existing PEGO appropriations, so this is just, as mentioned before, this is old PEGO money that we're re-appropriating through this proposed document.
I like that a lot. Yeah, I said it the other night.
To separate it. We added an emergency services project, and I can touch on that project as we get down. One change, we, we've historically added $200,000 to contingency in the bond, a combination of having two projects, so that we're bonding $7 million for Beaver Run, and we're borrowing $2 million, which I'll touch on, the West Side Collector. And given there's just two projects, when you have 10 projects, you usually want that contingency there, because one of them could go off. And we're also, the, the bond market, we're still in a period where they'll provide bond premiums, so in the competitive bidding process of our bonds, we sometimes get additional money that can be spent, so we could use that as contingency. I've also tried to rank these projects by department number. There were some, like, the Public Safety Building was listed at the bottom of the list, and tried to correct that. So if there's no questions there, I'll go department by department. General Services, we, we added a project that is for this building, and it's for finance and the customer service counter renovation. This is to redo the counter they have, and it also adds bullet resistance to it, and we're proposing to fund that through existing PEGO.
Where's this?
When you pay your county taxes-
Finance.
Yeah, finance, so it's that front, or it's-
And a bulletproof vest?
It's bullet resistant. It's, it's common practice, you know, the city's done something similar with theirs, and we're trying to modernize it, yeah. And now's the time to do that.
So the city is on board with all this?
Oh, well, this is, this is county-
This is ours.
Yeah, this is county fully.
But they've done it with Steve and Laura.
With the government office building, if there's common areas, we get the city's buy-in prior to putting in, and I think we've communicated better than before with this CIP, with, with the city, so they should have in their capital plans their half of the common projects for this building. This being purely county finance, that's all us.
Right. Oh, you're talking about the finance department?
Yes, yeah, it's-
So you mean, you're going to put the same kind of glass in that they have in the city's finance department?
City, yeah, we're, we're going to mimic, mimic how they've upgraded theirs, and we're also going to make the, more of a workstation up at the window, so that they don't have a separate desk. It frees up more space, and they're always at the front window as well, so.
Is that the only area that's going to get this bulletproof protection?
That's my understanding is, yeah.
Okay.
Right now. Then with General Services, there were three projects that we simply just changed their funding source, that they were originally put in as general PEGO, and we plan to use existing PEGO.
Should, what we talked about earlier today be in this?
If, if we decide to wait, we will add that to the recreation parks and tourism as a, as a change. To IT, we, they had one project in FY21, and it was originally color-coded to be old bond money, when in reality, it was old bond proceeds, or, sorry, old PEGO. And, I'm still reading the sentence, so it's not, it's not planned to be funded with old bonds, it's planning to be funded with old PEGO. That's a year out. The Public Safety Building, the second half of the sheriff's building, has been moved from FY20 to FY21, and we think from construction, we're able to do that, and that'll be fine. For the Department of Corrections, the roof replacement project, we moved one year, and the flooring upgrade project, which had money all, all five years, we removed FY20s. The other four years remain the same.
How does the Public Safety Building, is it from the Sheriff's Department, right?
Yes.
How does that impact our, our expenses, our, our interest expenses on the bond? Will that extend the term of the bond or not?
So, so the, I guess the plan was, is to have two separate bonds to fund this. We had the first half of the project bonded this year.
Okay.
And we think by the time we start construction and we need that second half of the money, we're going to be in FY21.
So it doesn't, it doesn't create any more-
We don't think so. Emergency Services, I mentioned, we added a project. This is one that, we've done a major radio upgrade, but the siren system and the old pagers, there's still some, they call minotar, Larry may be familiar with, he may have one, yeah. So, so that pager right now that Larry has in his hands, in certain areas of the county, you're not getting full service. With emergency services, we try to have redundant systems, so, like, even with the Public Safety Building, the communication line that comes in, there's going to be two, so you basically pay double the cost, but if something happens, if one gets cut, you still have communications with the other one, so.
So this, would this deal with some of the issues they've had down in, like, Bi-Valve, kind of the West Side?
Yeah, Sharp Town, Bi-Valve, with those specific pagers, the VHF frequency, this is adding two new antennas, towers, to help close the gap. The new radios that have been issued, those are, those are perfectly fine right now, but, so we added that project, and we're proposing to fund that with existing PEGO. Public Works, I'm going to lump all them together, even though their department numbers vary a bit. The WIP, where we do 200,000 every year, that's still unchanged, except the funding source for FY20 will be existing PEGO, so we have this existing PEGO, let's use it for that. And then we reduce the Wycomico River dredging support for FY20 from half a million to 35, I'm sorry, 350,000, so that's a $150,000 decrease.
Is the existing PEGO in the WIP because we didn't do anything last year? We had the 200?
No, this is using other monies. Instead of using FY20 revenue to pay for it, we reallocated existing PEGO. We're, we're using the WIP.
Existing PEGO.
Yes, from other projects.
See, that's what we had a thing in here about. I mean, when we approve a project, we approve that project. I don't, we don't approve a project for one project, and then, because then, for all we know, we could have a project for, similar to what we saw today, you've got a project that's, you're telling us is 400, turns out to be 200, but you just slide that 200 over to another project that's now 600 instead of 400, and it's hard for us, as a body of oversight, to be able to determine, to be able to determine exactly how much we're spending for what, and where the over-cost might be, and where the short-
I, I think it would be helpful to have a list of where this existing PEGO is coming from, what, what projects it's, it's tied to, but we're still seeking your approval to reallocate this money, so that's the-
The funds get encumbered, John, and they get placed in this Fund 32. It can roll for three years. At the point in time that we want to repurpose the funds, we have to come back to you and go through the process. So what Weston is proposing here is that projects that may have been abandoned, or may have come in at a lower cost, we're, we're proposing that instead of those funds staying idle and/or lapsing back into the general fund, we want to repurpose those for current projects, but it still goes through the legislative process.
So we're just bringing it back to you?
Yeah, I appreciate that it's coming back here, it's just-
Yeah, well, it's kind of like Weston said, it'd be good to have a list of-
Sure.
Where the money's coming from, so then we can say, all right, you didn't spend on-
True, yeah. I mean, once we pass it the first time, we think it's a done deal, and the money's, you know, it's, I mean, it's open enough, believe me, I mean, I don't think this has been something that, Joe, I don't think you're familiar with transferring existing PEGO over the years, you've been on the council, and I know I have, and Bill, from the few years you've done.
Well, I think it would be helpful, I mean, just tell us where it came from.
Sure, sure.
I think it creates a certain amount of, I don't know, not a right word to use, maybe suspicion, when we are passing the capital budget. If we see enough of this, we say, well, is it really going to cost that much to do this? You know, because, you know, two years ago, you had $400,000 left out of a $700,000 project, so, you know, and over time, I think that's going to, that's going to build up, just create an air of suspicion.
Well, I think that's why the three-year limit is in there, Joe, so that, that if in fact, and I don't think we ever intentionally pad, and we put the department heads through a pretty rigorous process in terms of defending, hey, why do you want this much money? Where did you come up with that number? And still sometimes it's wrong, but I think that's why the three-year limit is there, so that it can't just stay there in perpetuity, that it, at some point in time, it's got to, it's got to be resolved, goes back to general fund.
Okay, did we approve that going back to general fund?
Yes, sir. Well, it would automatically lapse back into general fund after three years.
So we don't know that it goes back to general fund.
If it was, if it was bonded back to what Mr. Taylor said earlier, that once the entire bond issue is completed, and it's got to be the whole bond issue, so once all that's completed, if there are funds left, we've got the choice of paying down debt, putting the money back into the general fund, or repurposing the money for appropriate projects, but it still has to come back through the legislative process. Did I get that right, Bob?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure about it coming back to the general fund, that's the only thing, Wayne, because it doesn't say that in the charter. Now, whether that would be something that essentially is just common sense, even though it doesn't say in the charter, I, I don't know, but it sounds like in the charter, it stays in the capital budget for some other projects.
It could. Where we really, where we really have to be very careful are the, are the word of education, projects, because we don't have direct knowledge of whether or not a project is complete, if there are payments that are still outstanding, this, that, and the other. So we query them on an annual basis as to, are all of your projects that were in this bond issue completed, or are there still outstanding issues?
Right.
Once they say, yep, you've got a green light, that's when we've got to repurpose those funds. So I think for sake of clarity, when we reach that resolution, or reach that point where funds should be repurposed, then I think we should come back to council. I think that's a clean enough way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a general matter, since we have so much capital expenditure anyway-
Correct.
The idea of it going back into the general fund is nice, but from a practical standpoint, unnecessary.
And I really, I do, I really appreciate you admiring all this, because if you didn't, we wouldn't know.
Sure.
I'm assuming, though, or is there going to be a time period where we're going to approve individually all these transfers, because this is just a work session?
My, my understanding is this is still a draft document. It hasn't been approved yet, so, you know, if, as long as you guys have, are okay with what the final draft is, and we need to add the project, or projects we spoke about with Steve Miller, and my memo needs to reflect a few other changes that I've, I've caught, I didn't, I didn't add.
When you approve the CIP, you really, this is blended into it, so if you approve the use of the funds-
Right.
Then you're really approving the movement of those funds, so you're really three points here. One, that the PEGO portion, the current year PEGO portion, is approved through the budget cycle, the borrowing is approved through the bond cycle.
Right.
The repurposing of existing PEGO funds that, for all intents and purposes, are lying idle, would come, I, I would think would come through the approval of the CIP.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, too, and just another observation on that, by keeping the surplus funds from completed and abandoned projects in the capital budget, it's essentially like it's going back into the general fund, because that much less new PEGO is needed, so it winds up the same, come out the same place.
And, and, and further to that, Bob, we're repurposing the funds for the original intent of capital improvements.
Yeah, right.
As opposed to putting the funds back into the general fund, using it for some other purposes.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, since money's fungible, it's like you put it back anyways.
So could it, in actuality, should it-
Get your mic, Joe.
Should it ever go back into the general fund? Being it's borrowed money, if it's bonded money?
Well, if it's borrowed money, I think, I'll have to check, I'll have to check-
I think there it would go back to-
I'll have to check legal on that.
For the, pay down the bonds.
I'll have to check legal on that, Joe.
You know, I asked a long time ago, when we were having road issues, you know, why didn't we buy money, and it was always, oh, borrow money, I'm sorry, it was always, I don't know if it was embedded in the county, that we didn't borrow money to fix roads, but if you're actually putting this money back into the general fund, and that money is going to do other projects, that it is borrowed money, so.
And, and, and that, in fact, Joe, might disqualify those bonds from a tax-exempt status, so we should be careful with that. We, we don't borrow money for maintenance of roads, because it doesn't qualify for tax-exempt bonds. New construction does.
Yeah, we've seen how that happened down in Allen, right?
Huh.
Never mind. I said, we've seen how that happened in Allen that time. It's not easy to fix that road.
Okay, thank you. So that concluded Public Works Engineering. Public Works-
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I, nevermind.
Public Works Roads, we removed the equipment storage shed and dry storage building. Public Works Roads. We removed the equipment storage shed and dry storage building that were both proposed for FY20. They were smaller amounts, and they were needed to complete projects from previous year. And a combination of value engineering helped get those costs down. So we figured that out. So we don't need that additional money. So we removed that. We have, as a surprise to everyone, we have moved the West Side Collector Phase Three. We had put it in an out year, so fiscal year 2023, and we've proposed it for fiscal year 2020. Thought is with that, when we sat down and really dug into those plans, where they've been there for a while, we think we can get significant drainage improvements in that area as well. Crooked Oak, you know, and that area, we think we can, we can do that. And if the state keeps letting Nanticoke Road wash out, it's helpful to have that extra path for our citizens to take.
Yeah, I've gotten a lot of people made that comment, and if this were completed, it'd make things easier when Pemberton washes out.
That's why I was talking to wash out.
And you conveyed that to us, and that was, you know, one of the, and what we think we can do drainage-wise to help out that, that area, I think, would be a net positive. We then also added Three Bridges Bridge in Willards, and we plan to use general fund PEGO. So this is an existing PEGO. This is regular FY20 PEGO and a state grant. There's bridge improvement funds out there, and we pay, I forget if it's 5% of that or 10% of that, and they cover the rest.
Is that going to be replaced with a bridge or tiles?
I think there's going to be a bridge, a full bridge replacement. The ones where we have found putting tiles, pipes, and getting it off the bridge inventory, we try to do that. So Bear Swamp and there's one other that comes to mind.
Yeah, I'm drawing a blank.
For Public Works Solid Waste, we got an updated cost estimate on the emergency generator. So we've reduced that from 250,000 to 200,000. And we've pushed out the landfill cell seven construction from FY2021 to 2122. So that's been shifted a year.
Weston?
Yes.
I thought solid waste was self-sufficient. I didn't think we borrowed money for that. Is that?
We still show solid waste. If you go to numbered page four, we do not borrow money. This is just purely, we still show the capital projects.
But why is it being pushed off, I guess? Maybe that's my.
Oh, we think with cell nine reaching completion, we'll have time. And having a recent cell being built, we have a better idea on timeframe. So we think we can wait until.
So it's a matter of money.
Yeah, it's not a matter of money. It does help us, we can save more in the process. And so we're going to push design off till 21, and then construction in 22. But that's a good question. Next, with Board of Education, and we met with Dr. Hanlon and her staff yesterday to clarify these things. The Beaver Run project, we made some changes. We're not proposing 9 million in the first two years. We're proposing 7 million and then adding 4 million to the last year. This spreads it out more evenly over three years. And I think it was beneficial to have the Mako staff here talking about Kerwin. Until we know exactly how the dust is going to settle on that, we have reservations about committing to another building and just having it in the pipeline. So we, I want to, the official statement is we have put the Mardella High Middle project on hold until we have a better idea as to what Kerwin, the $15 minimum wage, and potential recession is going to do.
Well, on the Beaver Run issue, so they're okay with cutting it back to seven, that's not going to hold up the project any. I guess my thoughts were, if they had the plans drawn, they knew how long it was going to take, they were figuring on spending $9 million each year, that's not going to affect them any, or?
They're also getting a significant portion from the state each year. And we were, we think their concern was possibly in that last year.
In the last year.
In FY22. So now, so in the next CIP, we may need to do more than seven. But we're working with their staff. They were going to calculate that and get back to us. But we're.
But it doesn't slow the project.
Okay, yeah. So they can get started. And the 7 million is enough to get them started. And as I mentioned, Mardella High Middle, the study and planning for that is on pause.
With the Beaver Run, how do we know everything's going to be so great in fiscal year 22 that's going to dovetail while we can add $4 million to the project in that exact year?
Well, you don't want to start the school and then.
Stop.
Have to stop.
I agree.
So that's the reason that we're being a little bit caught, a little bit cautious about Mardella, because again, with what you heard this morning from Mako, it will probably be when we enter the CIP cycle again next year and start the budget cycle, where we're going to have a clear idea of just how bad it's going to get in terms of things cascading down from the state. I'm personally still very concerned about the statewide shortfall in Board of Education OPEB. I mean, I forget what the number is, but it's an astonishing number. And if the state doesn't have money for Kerwin, and they're taking a write-down already, and they have a structural deficit, where's the money going to come from to bring OPEB coverage up to some reasonable level? I don't know where that money comes from.
I hate to see them hanging their hat on gambling proceeds.
I think, I thought you made an excellent point, Joe, because I can see for all kinds of reasons, I would anticipate that casino revenue is possibly going to weaken because of competition, because of economic factors, because of, you know, online, I mean, all kinds of reasons why physical casinos may not be bringing in as much revenue as currently they are. So.
It kind of made you feel like they were thinking that it was recession-proof. Casinos are recession-proof. I don't think that's the situation.
I don't know. It's a worry. The state finances are a concern, and the state's spending commitments are a concern. It'll cascade down in some fashion.
Another thing, looking in the out year, and the $4 million increase to that, our borrowing capacity goes up significantly more in the out year. So we could, yeah, yeah.
That does make sense.
And our borrowing this year, just a forecast on the budget, the borrowing that we've anticipated and the interest that we've anticipated, the interest rate we've anticipated, brings us in at about 10 and 1/2% on PNI. So we're 0.5 below the policy limit. So it's given us some headroom as we go out. We did that intentionally.
Moving on, we made no changes to the proposed Warwick or Library projects that were put in the document for the Health Department, Public Health. The hurdle building replaced carpet project has been moved from FY20 to FY21. We moved that out a year. On the airport, this is where I realized I didn't record all the changes I made, and I'm going to have to go back and do that. The old terminal building rehab, we pushed the design part of that 82,000 out a year. We pushed a rehab access control system out a year, and a main terminal HVAC system controls out of here. The air traffic control tower equipment has been pushed out from 2021 to 2122. The FEMA Cargo Joint Use Distribution Center has been moved out a year. That's a three-year project, so 202122 has gone to 212223. We then added three projects that we've been talking with USDA Rural Development, which include box hangars, a corporate hanger, as well as the ARF station. We're looking at getting fully grant-funded.
USDA will pay for ARF, a building?
They, it's included in their community facilities program, is my understanding. But there's also, I think FAA is another funding source. So it's sort of getting on their discretionary funds. Dawn would be better to go into the details on that.
And what happened with the existing building?
They're in a hanger right now that we would, we intend to move to another location.
So you're not going to tear the hanger down?
No, we moved that hanger across campus.
Be available for lease?
Right.
Yes, yes.
And back to the turmoil, can I ask you one more question? You're going to be building a new restaurant?
No.
No.
We haven't.
Okay.
Okay.
Supposed to be on the news tonight.
Well.
Who'd they talk to?
Well.
They didn't talk to me.
Here's, here's what could theoretically happen. A restaurant owner could very well do a land lease with us and build their own restaurant. And that's probably what she's looking at. That's, that's.
Do you all communicate much?
Yeah, we communicate weekly. We communicate weekly. So there's probably a few other airport changes in terms of years being pushed out. And I'll clarify that in a supplemental memo, providing where the PEGO monies are coming, as well as adding the recreation parks and tourism. They did have a few changes, so that's the last group of departments I wish to discuss with you all. There was a Harmon Field fencing project scheduled for FY20 that's been removed, and we've replaced that with Shoemaker Parking Lot Replacement Phase Two. And that will be funded through a combination of general fund PEGO and a state grant, very similar to how Harmon Field fencing was. And then a project Steve will be excited to tell you about is what we call the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex Field Seven and a Half, and details should be in this. But this is a special ball field that will allow people who cannot physically normally play on a traditional Little League or softball team.
Challenger.
Yeah, challenger, challenger field. And a part of that funding, we're looking at getting donations, and he's already made huge headways, and it hasn't been fully announced yet. So we've added that project with what we think it would cost the county. But depending on the donations that come in, we can, we can likely reduce that amount further.
He's presenting that concept to the chamber, I think, on Thursday, is he not, Weston?
I think so, at the legislative.
It's a really great idea.
So that, in general, are the changes. I do owe you all, as I mentioned, a supplemental memo, just to catch if there's anything else I missed. Include the PEGO projects and the history where the money was coming from. And then add the project, unless there's a time-sensitive issue with what Steve was proposing earlier, I can add that to the mix. So those are, in summary, the changes made from the December submittal.
Yeah, I mean, I really like what you're doing, because, you know, it's a project in motion, and you seem to be adapting and adjusting really well, and a lot of conservative measures I think you're taking. The only concern I have, and I never understood why there were so many stages in the CIP, you know, it's like back in November, we have to start thinking about it. We have public hearings, and then we move on, and we approve one stage, and so. I never understood why, just part of the process did it. What this leads me to wonder sometimes is that where we are now with what's being put on the table today, is that maybe the individuals that came to the public hearing back in November or December, it's not the same CIP that it was back then. And I'm really wondering, what is the significance of going through this long process when it's never, it's never the same from one month to the next, you know? And a planning document's one thing, and I recognize it.
The planning part is one thing.
But it's like, it's so unpredictable that it's hard even call it a planning document now. In a good way of what you're doing, you're doing great stuff. But I'm, my concern again is.
Understand.
Back in November and December, those people that wanted to, not that many people came, those that were very anxious about a CIP, and really want to know what's going on, they're going like, wait, I didn't know this, '23? No, it's '22, '25? No, it's '26. Everything seems upside down. So I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if I'm asking a question or not.
You're suggesting we put the CIP off a few months ago, a few weeks ago. Are you suggesting we delay the public hearing?
Or? I don't know the whole process, the whole process just seems.
Yeah, I'm not sure we even have a choice with that.
I think we've got to revisit the charter in that regard.
Right, the charter, right.
Because the charter lays out, you know, the timeframe. I never quite understood it either, John, but it was in the charter, and I said, okay, I'll do it. In some respects, we are starting too early for the budget year, because we don't know how finances are going to fold in.
We don't know the revenues.
But in terms of the long-term planning, you've got a fairly good idea of what you want to get done with long-term planning. It's that, it's that budget year, and it's the initial year of any significant project that really gets your attention. And you don't know at that point in time how much you can or can't afford in that first year.
Right.
So it's, it's a little bit of a, it's very fluid, I'll put it that way. And I think what we're doing this year makes a lot of sense. You know, hit the pause button.
Oh, yeah.
Take a breather, revisit it, and get more comfortable with particularly that first year and any significant project that we're going to take on that will have consequences in the planning years. So I'm much more comfortable with this year's cycle than I have been in the past.
I think we should put it closer to our budget every year.
I think you're right. I would agree with that, Joe.
I certainly wouldn't be sweating as much in December. It's like, okay, sure, go ahead. Let's look at it again in May.
Sure.
Well, I mean, I think it's about time to have a charter review committee formed anyway. That might be something.
I agree with that, too.
Throw to them to look at, and, you know, we've had 10 more years of experience looking at, you know, doing this stuff.
I think that's the next line of the deal.
Well, you also got to remember, though, the purpose of it in December, the purpose is, it's got to be, you can't do anything that's not in the CIP plan. So it's projects that you're.
Yeah, it's got to conform to your.
Right. It's got to be in there, whether you end up doing it or not doing it, but it has to be in the plans.
It's got to be in the plan, or you can't.
That's right.
But I liked all this, I mean, the initiative that you're taking, the clarifications that you're making, it's making it a lot easier for everybody to recognize where we're heading.
So again, I apologize. The memo was, the intention of the memo was to include all the changes, and I see at least three that didn't make it. So I'll, again, provide a supplemental memo and try to pull all the other information that's been discussed. And.
And I don't think the pages are numbered. Mine may.
Look at the very bottom right. They may be tiny.
I think it's jumping before I get to it.
Yeah, that could be it. PDFs will do that. If you print it out, you should, you should see it.
They're there. And thanks for the color coding, though. That definitely, that helps a lot.
Yes, it's come a long way in the last four years, my guys.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Going back to your question about the public hearing, council had the public hearing per the charter requirement back in February, but that was before these changes were made. Are you thinking that since we have this many changes, that we should have another public hearing on this document?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
I'm wondering, I mean, it's a question as to whether or not it's substantially making that big a difference to the overall impact of the county and the funding, et cetera. We'll think about it. Or do we have to think about it now?
The adoption of the CIP was extended to June the 4th, so we do have some time.
Yeah, yeah. We'll think it over.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. It's a good question.
Well, I mean, you could have it as part of the, we're having a budget hearing on May 7.
Could fold it into that.
Just fold, just say, if you have comments on this capital plan, have it at the same time.
They're two separate documents, though, so keep that in mind.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but if you.
But that's, I like that idea.
But it's only one, not beginning of.
Sure.
Doesn't matter, right.
Right.
It's two separate hearings.
Right.
What he said.
What he said.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, man.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Exciting. We have on the agenda, of course, is the Board of Education District Three interviews. How's everyone? Gaines Hawkins and Tanya Laird Lewis. Gaines, I think what we'll do is have you come up first, okay? We have you listed first on the agenda, I guess it was alphabetical order. But we'll do that, we'll do one of the.
agenda, I guess it was alphabetical order, but um, we'll do that, we'll do one at a time, instead of having you both sit up here and just, you can relax there, and Gaines will let you get started. How's that?
Then, then she'll know what we're going to ask.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Roll?
Yes. Be my guest.
Good afternoon, council members. Uh, I am Gaines Hawkins, a candidate for the District Three Wycomico School Board vacancy. Uh, you, I think you have a longer background piece that I submitted, this'll be considerably shorter. I am the son of teachers, college graduates, husband of Wycomico County teacher. All four of my children are products of public schools, each graduating from Parkside, three are now college graduates. I went to public schools, graduated from the Uni- University of Maryland College Park, moved to Salisbury in nineteen sixty-six, and retired six years ago after a thirty-three-year career in higher education administration, twenty-three years at Salisbury University and ten years at UMS. I believe a first-rate public school system is vital to the economic, social, and cultural future of Wycomico in a twenty-first century that places an increasing value on having a highly educated workforce. Wycomico is blessed with, with what I call our community's four pillars. Salisbury University, one of the nation's best regional universities, PRMC, cited by Healthgrades, is one of the best two-hundred-and-fifty hospitals in the country, Purdue Farms, ranked eighty-ninth by Forbes in its list of America's largest private companies, and the Wycomico River, a sublime natural resource that benefits us in myriad ways. The foundation for our future, though, is our public school system. It should be our highest priority to ensure it's not simply the best we can afford, but rather simply the best. Wycomico's future success hinges on be- becoming recognized as a smart community, a community, community that publicly embraces the importance it places on an excellent public school system. I find fulfillment in being an active participant in a community, a commu- community with a shared commitment to the common good. I feel I can make a contribution to our community as a member of the school board team.
Thank you. Did you have a presentation as well, similar?
Just a similar introduction.
Okay, uh, why don't you come up and we'll let you do that, and then we'll ask questions, the council will ask questions of you both at the same time. This is the first time we've done this, too. We're all new to this.
We're all learning together.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, how's everyone?
Great.
This is an odd position, but I will attempt to make eye contact with all individuals throughout my introduction. It's just habit. Okay, um, good afternoon, uh, Tanya Laird Lewis. I am currently a stay-at-home mom and an active substitute in Wycomico County. I am highly involved. I'm a dedicated parent within the county. My um, career objective is to maintain a positive and collaborative and cooperative relationship with this, within the schools, the board officials, and Wycomico County Council and city members, to enhance my educational and professional skills in an environment which advocates for the learning and safety for children. Um, for those of you who have had me um, speak before, you are well aware that it is all about the children. It is about what we can do to make the environment they are in conducive, effective, and to create wonderful individuals that are going to go out into society, and they're going to become scholars, and they are going to be beneficial to the work environment. Um, I also attended University of Maryland Eastern Shore, um, where I earned a degree in biology, and I played there on the softball team. Also, the requirements for a master's in teaching were gained there as well. Things that I can offer to Wycomico County, strong collaborator, leadership skills, effective time management, ability to work under pressure, positive attitude, the willingness to adapt, creative and logical thinking skills. One of the main things I would like to do if I am selected to be in this position is to increase the open lines of communications between the schools and the Wycomico County Board of Ed, and my intention is to do that by reaching the parents where they are. We have multiple students with multiple learning levels, we have the parents who have those same exact levels. We need to do what we can to make them aware of the concerns and issues that are going on in the county in a situation at which they can understand. Um, we need to, I have lo- I have so many things, I'm, I don't want to take up all the time, but I have so many things that I would love to bring to the table. Um, we have a committee for the county, it's called the Parent Advisory Committee. I'm the school representative for both Willards and Pittsville to the Board of Ed currently. The parents trust me, they come to me with issues and concerns, they confide information in me, at which I can relay to administrators as well as board officials to ho- to hopefully take care of some of the issues that are occurring in our schools. Um, I know you watch the news, I know you're well aware of the critical issues we have going on right now in our county. They're alarming. The factors that are occurring with discipline in our county are alarming, and one of the things we need to do is make sure that we are upholding the guidelines of the code of conduct, we need to be holding our children accountable, we need to be holding their parents accountable, because yet again, our goal here is to create scholars, not to create conflicts. And I feel that being able to have a cooperative relationship with parents is going to head off some of the alarming factors that we are currently dealing with in the county. And let's see. I'm sure you're going to ask some other questions that are going to deal with many of the other points that I would like to bring up, so.
All right, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
What I would suggest, council members, and let me know if you think this would work, if you have a question, uh, we'll direct the question, first to Mr. Hawkins, and then the um, um, and then, I guess, the council could ask that one question, and then to Ms. Lewis with the same question, and then the next time we would rotate it, where Ms. Lewis would be asked the question first, and Mr. Hawkins, uh, and that way it could be a kind of a fair balance. Who would like to start, Larry?
Yeah, um, I, my question really only pertains to Ms. Lewis, if that's okay. You mentioned the MAT, did you get the MAT?
Um, I actually went through the program and um, was hired in Wycomico County. They put you on a provisional certificate. Um, I missed the test by one point.
Okay.
And then, my husband and I got married, we started a heating and air business, um, had two children, and I actually went back um, to um, do all the coursework and put all of that up to date. And UMS does not have a col- uh collaborative unit currently with Wycomico County, and UMS would not, or Wycomico County would not accept any of the prior coursework for me to go through um, and reinstate that certificate.
Wasn't there a collaboration with Salisbury University as well?
There is one with Salisbury, um, but it's what your home school is, where you enroll, and I received my bachelor's of biology from University of Maryland Eastern Shore, so that's where the bulk of my credits were from. So, um, Dr. Briggs, um, Brian Regner actually went with me very extensively. We went to UMS, um, we had meetings, we met with uh, members of the Board of Ed to try to get this process going, and Briggs actually, Dr. Briggs actually brought me on board um, to fill in a long-term science position for him at Bennett High School. So we made multiple attempts to do that, but the, the bond that the county has with UMS is not as strong as it is with Salisbury when it comes to those academic credits and extensions and things of those sorts.
That's interesting, thank you.
Any other question?
Um, Joe. Mr. Hawkins, and I guess both, both of them. We know that we have a really bad discipline problem in our schools, and um, we keep hearing that hands are tied because of the, was it Department of Justice ruling, I think it was, where basically they can't expel some students, can't suspend some students. Where do you, where do you see that as being a solution to that problem? Um, and, 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 nobody else knows it, so I don't expect you to, but.
Get your opinion, anyway.
I'm not going to offer a solution, and, and I, and I, I've talked to some uh, former board members, and what they told me was, you don't realize how much you don't know about the school system until you become a board member, so I say that upfront, so I'm not privy to a lot of the background in, in terms of discipline issues and the challenges that uh, many of our parents, faculty, and administrators and students face. Yeah, I think this, this pre-K program could actually be a benefit. Again, I'm an old guy, but I remember the discipline problems that I, that I experienced when I was uh, school age, elementary, and it was, it's usually from kids who didn't want to be there. Kids don't want to be in school, and it's a variety of reasons. It wasn't so much maybe drugs in single-parent homes back then, but kids didn't feel confident uh, in school, and so they would act out accordingly. And, uh, you know, I got in my fair share of playground tussles with, with other kids, but, you know, the more, the more we can bring kids into uh, into, into the classroom at an earlier ra- age and enhance their confidence when they enter, and so when they're, because many of these kids that aren't confident in school, nobody's reading to them before they get to school. So I think, uh, I am very hopeful that the earlier we get kids into a classroom, exposed to uh, reading, increase their confidence, put them in a social environment which expects them to behave, uh, you know, I, I think that's uh, could yield some positive outcomes.
I, I would suggest you could expand on that as well, um, your position as far as pre-K is concerned, because that is, as you know, the hot.
That wasn't a question.
The question was about discipline.
But I'd also like to hear your question on your response to pre-K.
On the pre-K, okay.
Put it all together.
I was going to say, where would you like me to begin?
Well, it was Joe's question, so we'll start with him.
Discipline, okay. Um, actually, that is one of my most critical issues that are facing Wycomico County currently. Discipline, it's the practice of training to obey, and yes, the training is going to begin in pre-K, when you expose them to following rules and guidelines, being around other individuals out of a small daycare setting, out of the comfort of being home with grandparents, and out of the comfort of being home with, with their parents. However, if you look the definition up, it also says to obey rules or a code of conduct and using punishment to correct the disobedience, and I feel that that currently is where the, the county is lacking. We have a code of conduct for a reason. We need to make sure that we are following the rules and the procedures in the code of conduct when we're disciplining a student. We need this. Students need this, teachers need this, staff needs this, and sometimes the parents need this. As a county standing strong, we need to be enforcing discipline. Are we backing down currently with the guidelines for the Department of Justice? Yes, we are. Because if we were addressing these issues when they first start to arise, following the code of conduct, then it's not going to accelerate to the situations that we have occurring now in schools where SROs are being put in dangerous positions, while students are being put into dangerous positions. I was at Bennett High School with Dr. Briggs. There were multiple issues that occurred there in that school, and they needed to be addressed. There were days a student did something that was inappropriate, and they were right back in my classroom the next day. Did that follow the code of conduct? Possibly. Could it have not followed the code of conduct to a T? That is also possible. Discipline needs to be the focus within our, with, in our county. We need to make sure that we are not allowing the students to feel that it's acceptable to portray this behavior day after day after day after day. It's a habit. This is a learned behavior. They're doing it day after day, therefore, for them, it's becoming acceptable. You have to try to break the habit forty-four times. You have to make an attempt to break. Do we have forty-four parts to our code of conduct? No. Why are we allowing these students to go through this? Consistency is the key to change. The majority of these students who are receiving disciplinary conduct, they're acting out because there's an underlying issue. How about we give them the services that they need? Are we giving them these um, mental health courses? If there's a student that has an issue, oppositional defiant, wh- whatever their situation may be, are we allowing them the services that they need in the county? Are they visiting with the social workers that every school in our county should have, but it doesn't? We're doing the children a disservice if they're not learning the behaviors and how to correct them at home, they're with us seven hours a day. There is no reason that we cannot give them the services that they need. I know that on the professional days that are upcoming and the one we just passed, that there were multiple schools that offered a mental health awareness to their teachers as part of their professional development. They need to know how to handle these students who are struggling. Can we address the underlying issue? Yes, we can address their situation. The issue with that is, are we giving them the consequence in the full degree of the punishment for the action they are completing? If we do not give them a consequence, they're going to continue to do it again with the thought that it's, it's deemed appropriate in the setting, whether they are at home or whether they are at school.
Thank you. Question? Bill?
This might be a better one for, near the end, but uh, putting on your future hats.
Future hats.
Um, you know, it's, you know, to have a twenty-first century school system, what uh, you know, ideas would you bring to the tables, a school board number, that would uh, you know, help us move into the next generation of, you know, education? Anything either innovative or trends or, you know, ideas that uh, you see education moving to in the, in the future?
Yep, Dawn, you go.
I'll go first, that's fine. Um, I have noticed through my, my own situation, um, I went to college, received a four-year degree, okay, taught in Wycomico County. I'm currently a stay-at-home mom with a bachelor's in biology, okay? Um, also have all my teaching courses from the MAT program under my belt, as well as a CNA, GNA. I'm currently a stay-at-home mom representing both of my children's schools. Wycomico County does a fantastic job of allowing our students the opportunity to be prepared to attend a four-year university, which I feel is fan- it, it's wonderful that they do that. There is an array of courses that prepare students for this. I feel in the future that we need to tap into the unknown resource of the CTE program. It is something that is most beneficial. The students in our school systems have a broad spectrum of learning, um, learning strategies. Um, some students are hands-on, some students are not, test takers. Let's put them in the path of the CTE program. Let's give them a skill, let's give them the resources that they are going to need to go out and get a job, to be a blue-collar worker, to feel successful, to be able to provide for their family, and not just think the only way that they can go to college is to go to a four-year university. I really think we need to, um, when we do these career days for our high school, we need more CTE schools, we need more technical schools that are on that list. Um, the last me- parent advisory committee meeting, they passed around a form, and on that form were all the universities that were going to be at the fair. There was not one technical school listed, not one. Do you know the amazing technical schools that we have in Maryland, in our adjoining states? It would be an asset for some of these students who are not prepared to attend a four-year uni- university. I think we need to jump on the CTE program and promoting it. We need to have local business owners that own blue-collar businesses come in. They need to be starting talking to the middle school students. You have, I have a child in middle school. No, he may not be on a four-year university track, but boy, I bet you I could give him something to do with his hands, and he would feel successful. I think we need to bring that into the middle schools, start working with them, giving them a track to be based on, so that they're prepared when they hit Parkside to attend the CTE program. Bring technical schools in when we do our college fairs, and then push these students into an avenue that's going to make them feel successful.
Gaines?
You know, technology changes everything, as we know, you know. None of us had cellphones when we went to school, so, and now kids, you know, many of them need, need those cellphones to do their multiplication and, you know, I see the impact social media and that sort of thing has had on people's writing skills. They've deteriorated. But as I said from the outset, for Wycomico school system to meet the demands of the 21st century skills market, job market, workforce requirements, this community has to say, education is our highest priority. That, that means you members of the county council, it means the county executive, that means the business community, that means the people who are administrators and faculty at schools, and it means the school board. And we've got to say, this, this is the most important thing that we can do for, not only for the kids, but for our community as a whole. And if, if we don't do that, then, you know, I just think, you know, we're doomed to, you know, doomed to mediocrity. And I get people say, well, you know, we, we don't have the funds, and we can't do this, you know. Most of you were around in the early, in the 70s.
I wasn't.
But you grew up here. So, you, you all know the history, you know, many of you know the history of Salisbury State College. You know, when I joined that institution in 1979, it was basically open admission. You showed up on the first day in September, whenever it opened, and you walked in and say, can I get in? Sure, fine. You were accepted. And Dr. Tom Belavanz came in and said, no, we're going to, we're going to raise the standards. You're going to, we're going to strive for academic excellence, and you're going to have to, you know, we want to attract the best and the brightest to Salisbury State College. You know, people still call it STC, as many of you know, you know, the Teachers' College. Where, where could my kid go if they can't get into anything, any, any other school? Well, they could always go to Salisbury. And boy, I was there in charge of the promotion end of his marketing strategy, and so I was, I feel that many of the queries from parents saying, what do you mean, my kid can't get into, you know, Salisbury State? And so there was a lot of blowback to that effort. But over time, as I said, you know, we, most of you, when you say, what's, what's so great about Wycomico County, you know, Salisbury University is the top of the list. But that took leadership. Somebody who said, we can become, you know, an excellent institution. We can, we can prove that higher education in Wycomico County can attract outstanding students, outstanding faculty, and provide, you know, a really significant economic boost to the community, although that was, you know, that was certainly secondary. So, Bill, that's, you know, what can we do in the 21st century? We can say, public school education is the most important thing for us and for everybody, not just, not just, not just the kids, for all of us.
We got a presentation earlier from Maryland Association of Counties regarding Kerwin Commission. I don't know if either one of you had any quick comments or thoughts on any of the efforts that their state is taking, or any of the specific thoughts on Kerwin? It doesn't matter to me who goes first, but any quick thoughts or...
I mean, I see it rolling in, and I, certainly it's, I mean, I haven't studied it to any great degree. It's going to mean more money, but more expectations. You know, I certainly am a believer in, in benchmarks, that, that, you know, it's not enough just to double out money. You need to have outcomes, you know, to go with them, but, but there are going to be expectations. As I, as I read it from, on the local level, it's not just the state saying, we're going to give you a check along with that. So, we'll see how it, see how it goes. I'm excited because I believe in the commitment the state has in producing, you know, the, the highest rated school system in the country. We used to have that recognition. We no longer do. So, I think that's great for attracting businesses to the state, just as, you know, Bill's in real estate. He knows how important it is to businesses, to attract businesses, that we would have a reputation as having an outstanding public school system.
There are a lot of requirements and expectations that come from the state for the students that are in each classroom. And along with that comes multiple forms and levels of testing. And of course, those expectations have to be met for those funds. The students receive, each school in the county receives a certain amount of funds for these students in the county. Now, the only concern and issue that I have with these expectation and, and requirements to receive the monies is what are we doing for our special education population? Are, are we meeting them where they are? Are we advocating so that the parents understand what's going on with these requirements? Are the special education students being prepared to take these assessments that the county and that their school's receiving money for? And I, I think that that would be my main goal, would be to make sure that as a parent of a child with a learning disability, who on these assessment struggles, so when you get, you, you get a paper when they're done their testing, and it has all these different types of bar graphs and charts, and, and you see that your child is below level. That's great that the county is receiving this money, but what are we going to do to bring this child's score up so that they feel successful now that you've got the money? That is my concern, is meeting all students where they are and giving them the resources that they need yet again to be scholars in our county.
I guess my question is maybe about meeting students where they are, but the magnet program has been controversial in the past. What are your two thoughts on the magnet program, I guess, is Gaines, or, or, Tanya?
Do we mean the program that's currently at North Salisbury, or do we mean, the program, I have actually been a substitute at North Salisbury over there with Assistant Principal, Ms. Baker. So, I have actually been in that building and, and observed some of those classes. Those children are working. Those children are, they are successful. They are, they are excelling in what the curriculum is. There is also the, the program that is now at, I just rolled blank?
Okay.
The, the STEM program, the new STEM program that has the, the students in there. And the rigor of that program is very, is very difficult as well. We have students from Pittsville that were accepted into the program. I feel that it, being a pilot program, needs work. There needs to be a certain level of accountability that is all across the board. There are some students that have come back simply due to the requirements. There may be six and seven hours of, of homework over the weekend, as well as two and three additional hours of, of homework in the evenings. Are they learning? Are they excelling? Yes, they are. Are we preparing our students from the mainstream public school to go into these programs? It's a pilot program. It's very hard to tell. Do I think our county needs it? Absolutely. Because there are students who are getting left behind in the classroom because they are excelling above and beyond, and then they're, they're becoming complacent. We are not pushing them to the maximum amount of ability that they can do. So, I think that these programs are working. I think that like any program in the county or the state, it's going to need to be revised, and I think that that's just going to be a learning process for everyone at this point.
Mark, I was actually around when Dr. Evelyn Holman introduced it. And it was certainly controversial then because it was a departure from, you know, the, previously all students went to classes together, and they were, you know, it was pretty much a mix. You know, to be honest, I was, I wasn't really crazy about it. Then my son got accepted. It's special instruction. But then I have two younger daughters who came along, went to Fruitland, and they opted, thank you, they opted not to do it, because they had a core group of kids that they, they were friends with, all good students, and so they just went through primary, I guess, intermediate schools in, in Fruitland, and, you know, they went on and had very successful high school, college, college careers. But I, I guess I'd have to study it on, you know, I don't know all the details about what, where we are with the magnet program right now. Again, get back to, you know, people like Joe Allen are saying, you know, you, you need to know that you don't know a lot about what's going on in the school system. So, I would, before I give, you know, some opinion about something without really immersing myself in the issues that are confronting the program, the pluses and minuses, the pros and cons, you know, I preserve, I mean, any type of overarching comment about it.
Yeah, I have a question for both of you. If you get confirmed to the board, do you plan on completing the next three and a half years? And if so, do you plan on running for reelection?
I guess so. See how those three and a half years. Yes, I'm certainly planning on, on doing that. And I think Tanya mentioned in her opening remarks something that...
He's speaking to the mic.
I'm sorry. Tanya, Tanya mentioned something in her over, opening remarks, which I concur with. Your district, you know, I know there's, I believe, four schools, Parkside, Bennett Middle, and the two Fruitland schools. And, you know, I, I would hope after initial orientation to be visiting those schools, those administrations, those PTAs, and, because I think my first priority is to represent the residents of District Three in, on, on the school board. Not just the students, not just the parents, but, but everybody, because everybody has an interest in the successful school system. So, you know, I do that. Certainly want to make my contribution to conversations about strategic planning overall, and I know we have supervisory responsibility for the superintendent. But, yeah, I mean, I need to get to know the schools, the people involved, see how, you know, am I making a difference? You know, I've been on lots of boards. If you've read my remarks, I've been on a dozen boards and had leadership positions, and I've stayed on some boards for 12 years and some boards for two years, you know, because if I, I want to make, make sure I'm making a contribution. And I, I've also managed boards, and I've had people come on boards who just want to show up, and, you know, so, that's not my style. But, you know, I spend three and a half years on the board and then make that decision.
Well, I'd encourage you to visit all the schools, because you're going to be making decisions for all of them.
Yes, I mean, I certainly would intend to do that, but I think I should, you know, as a District Three representative, I feel I should really, as much as possible, be an expert on those schools.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely. If I am selected to fill this position as a potential board member, I would want to implement as many positive avenues and programs as we can into the county, not just for the schools in our district, but other schools. One of my main things that I would love to push forward through for the next three years, and then hopefully reelection, would be a substitute readiness program, which would encompass every single school in Wycomico County. We have substitutes coming in and out of these schools, and they are not prepared to be in the schools. They haven't visited them. They don't know the administrators. We, we have a wonderful program here for that, but that's one of my main goals, and I would love to be able to see that through as one of my primary things to implement to be effective in our county. And as long as I'm representing the parents, the schools, and the community to the best of my ability, I would plan to continue to run and fill the District Three position on the board.
We, we need to, I think we need to wrap it up. We're about that time. I would ask one question, and just to keep it very, very brief, and start with you, Tanya. If we found a million dollars in the budget, what would be your first priority?
If we found a million dollars in the budget...
Yeah, if we had a windfall of a million dollars, exactly what would be your first priority?
You'd like that to a windfall.
Well, you know, and there, there are certain things that I'm very adamant about. There is a million dollars in the budget. The first thing I would do is make sure that all of our schools are safe.
Gaines?
For, you know, the superintendent, the board have already done a lot of research and developed priorities. So, I'd go to them. They're, they're the ones that've done due diligence on what our priorities should be. I'd start there.
Okay, very good. Thank you both for being here, because it's been, it's been probably a more rigorous program than we thought, a more rigorous process than we thought. Started from day one, when you had your interviews, and then two public hearings, two public hearings?
The school board nominating commission.
Yeah, two public hearings and meetings with the school board. So...
And private.
Yeah, so I know it's been a long road, so we really do thank you for your, for your tenacity and putting your hat in the ring.
What happens next?
We will...
Actually, the county council was required to have a public hearing as well, so we'll be scheduling that in the very near future. We are on a deadline. I think we have until June the 3rd. June the 3rd, from the date that they, you guys, your names were submitted to us.
From the nomination commission.
What's a public, a public hearing in which you all discuss?
You won't be, it won't be necessary. Again, and I was talking to Laura before the, during the break, that I think this whole process of public hearings is way too, way too onerous. I think we're going to have to try seeing how we can reduce this some, but we'll have a public hearing. Now, for public input, it's not necessary for the two of you to be here. It's just...
Probably nobody else will show up either.
They would just say to us if they, if they, if they felt there was a stronger...
Her family and my family.
That's right. I have a whole little posse that comes with me, except for today.
So, that would be our process. We'd just have the public hearing, and we could vote that same day, or we could defer to the following meeting. But the public hearing will be in two weeks. Oh, no, we have to advertise it.
It does have to be advertised, and we do have a lot of public hearings already scheduled for May 7th. I mean, that's the end of our budget hearing, so I'll have to work that out with the council president, and then we'll let you two know.
But it'll probably be the first meeting in June.
We have to approve one of them by June 3rd.
First meeting in June.
By June 3rd.
You're going to have to do it in May.
What's our timeframe? Do we have enough timeframe to advertise to do it in, on their second meeting in May?
If you do it the May 21st meeting, then you're having the public hearing and making the approval the same night. If we decide to have the public hearing on May 7th, which again, I just mentioned, we have a very busy schedule that night, then you could have the public hearing and then wait till May 21st.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
To make your decision.
I think we'll have to do it on the 7th.
Yeah.
And that gives us enough time to advertise legally.
It does.
Okay, so we'll have a public hearing on May 7th.
I thought Councilman Dodd was advocating for, he needs two members representing his district.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's Larry, I know.
Well, thank, thank you all for putting your name...
Hey, let me tell you something. I wish we could, because you both are great. I've heard you speak before. You're both a fantastic...
That's a decision.
But, um, thank you all for putting your names forward.
Thank you, Brad, for the plate.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let me move my way around here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
He knows how to get them.
It's been three years.
I don't want to leave you now, but thank you so much for listening to us.
Entertained motion to adjourn so we can go to closed session. Second favor.